Solution, have that. I see the mission statement, so I'll move to the mission statement. "We are committed to academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment. In partnership with our families and our community, our mission is to promote confidence, inspire a passion for learning, and to prepare our students to become responsible global citizens." Okay, we're gonna need to skip memorial resolution number three because we don't have a copy, I apologize. Unanimously adopted by the Monroe Woodbury Board of Education at its regular meeting on Wednesday, December 10th, whereas Mr. Ronald Johnson was employed by the Monroe Woodbury Central School District as a music teacher, his employment with the district began September 1969 and he retired July 2004. And whereas the, through his dedication to the district, Ron has touched the lives of many individuals in our district. It is hereby resolved that the Board of Education, on behalf of the entire district, extends in memoriam its appreciation and gratitude, as well as its sincere condolences to the Johnson family. As the above resolution is adopted by the Board, it will become part of the official historical records of the district and will serve as a memorial lasting for all time. Can I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next up, we have the organization of the Board. With Ms. Caitlin Simmons out, there's a no, is there a nomination for the President of the Board of Education?
I nominate Caitlin Simmons for the Board of Education President.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we have Ms. Caitlin Simmons will be the Board of Education President going forward, since she's not here, she has up to 30 days to come in and take the oath of office, she will do that at her next earliest convenience. Nomination for the Vice President of Board of Education, may I have a motion for a nomination?
Motion to nominate Suzanne Donahue as Vice President.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Now, Ms. Donahue can take the oath of the Vice President Office. Raise your right hand if you feel...
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duty of office advice to the President and Board of Education of the Monroe Woodbury Central School District, according to the best of all possibilities.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the revised agenda?
Motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Questions or comments from interested citizens? Not aware of anything? Yeah. Okay. Presentations, we have update on the district goals.
Good evening, everyone. Dr. Tracy Norman, Superintendent of Schools. Keeping with what we promised back in August, we're going to provide the Board of Ed, as well as the public, an update on our district goals. So, we have eight goals, and each goal, one of our cabinet members takes responsibility for that goal as it falls under his or her purview. And I will actually take responsibility by presenting on the actual goal that speaks to our strategic plan. So, we will begin with goal number one. Dr. Morales, Dr. Hassler.
Thank you, Dr. Norman. We have five separate tasks that fall under Goal One, which is to create conditions to increase students' understanding and application of academic content. The first task is to review and monitor student attendance, which is ongoing, and performance to increase student outcomes. This goal is actually a continuation from a task that we started last year for Goal One, for a similar goal. Last year, we established new attendance protocols for tracking and monitoring student attendance and intervening as needed. We have been able to successfully implement those protocols from the start of the school year, and we continue to track and closely monitor student attendance. In addition, part of this task includes the distribution and review of student achievement data. Student achievement data includes various forms of assessment data, including the three through eight ELA and math assessment, grades, fifth grade, fifth grade and eighth grade science assessment, New York State Regents exams. You may also recall, part of the Goal One last year was to examine AP and dual enrollment data, and that is also now falling under this task of Goal One, where we continue to track enrollment in our accelerated dual enrollment and advanced placement classes, as well as student acquisition of college level courses, college level credits, and student achievement on AP assessment scores. Right now, we're at about 50% completion regarding this work, and this work continues to develop over the course of the school year.
The next item there is a new initiative for this year, establishing a curriculum council for oversight, collaboration, and guidance for our curriculum development, ensuring implementation across content areas and grade levels. So, we've established this council this year. We've held two meetings so far, October and November. Both meetings started with, one was virtual, the first one was in person, where we met as a large committee broke off into secondary and elementary groups to discuss things more pertinent to those areas, and then reconvening into the large group district-wide. One of the takeaways from that meeting was establishing a new practice of learning walks, where our, all of our teachers will have the opportunity to spend time in a, if you're an elementary teacher, you'll be able to visit high school classes, which will help give us opportunities to really boost our vertical articulation, so that all are aware of curriculum decisions and strategies that are happening in the classrooms at all levels. Where we are right now, we are saying that we are about 25% complete on that goal.
The third task is to align K-12 curriculum and state, to align K-12 curriculum with state and national standards. Similar to the first task, this is a continuation of work that started last year as part of Goal One. Last year's focus was predominantly on the core content areas of ELA, math, science, and social studies, that were continued into this year, but we're also expanding into the various encore areas as well, and that work is approximately 40% complete.
The next item is, is a rather hefty item that's incorporated into this goal, and that's the review, the review revision and finalization of our MTSS plan. So, to initiate that, we have had one district-wide meeting back in October. Each building leadership team then developed who would be on their new MTSS teams, and have developed a timeline to hold meetings with the people they've selected to be on that MTSS team. Some of the tasks that are falling into this action item include the initial phases of a tool that will allow us to collect data at the elementary level, as teachers do not use gradebook at the elementary level the way they do at secondary. And part of ensuring that we have a complete MTSS plan includes work on behavioral and social, emotional support across all grade levels. To that end, we are continuing and expanding our PBIS work to all schools in the district. So, all buildings have formed a PBIS team, and those teams will be trained later this year. This, like I said, it is a lofty goal, which will likely continue into next year, and we are saying we are about 25% complete there.
Very similar to the work that is happening regarding MTSS, we're also doing similar work on the, in the area of special education across the school district. Similarly, we've developed a committee, that committee has met once so far, as a whole group, on October 28th. Since that October 28th meeting, we've all, we've broken up into smaller groups consisting of an elementary team, a secondary team, and a pupil personnel team. Those three teams are each head by our respective directors in those areas. The goal is to review our special education program and formalize it into a plan. Aside from being an important district goal, this is also a New York State mandate, so that will also bring us and keep us in compliance with New York State regulations. And we're saying we're also about 25% complete with that work at this point.
Ask any questions for Goal One?
Any questions for Goal One?
I don't have any questions, I just have maybe a request for consideration. I would love to see the prior percentage and current percentage, so we see the movement. Sometimes there'll be no movement, 25% might stay there for one reporting period to the other, but if we could maybe split that column, where we have prior and then current. I think that would help give the public too, an understanding, hey, it went from 15% to 25, or...
Note it, and the prior was zero, the last time we talked about it was, was August, but we'll make that going forward.
Thank you.
To give a good visual.
That was, that was all I had, thank you.
So, now we'll move to Goal Number Two. Mr. Berger?
Good evening, so, the HR office oversees Goal Number Two, which is to develop and maintain systems that focus on recruitment and retention of effective educators and support staff. Under that goal, we've identified seven action steps. The first one is to develop a task force to analyze recruitment gaps, that has been established. We meet monthly, our next meeting is scheduled for next week, and the purpose is to do exactly what it says, to identify and analyze those recruitment gaps and those hard-to-fill positions, and then from there, we can discuss recruitment strategies that will, excuse me, attract potential candidates to fill those positions, and then ultimately bridge those gaps across departments, excuse me. The second action step is to continue partnerships with local colleges, this is something that's ongoing. I had listed a couple of colleges that, and universities that we have been working with over the course of this year. The first listed is Mount St. Mary. We've had multiple meetings to discuss teacher pathway opportunities for our staff. We're currently offering an exciting program geared towards our teaching assistants and teacher aides in the district, that they would enter a program through Mount St. Mary College and partnered with Sullivan Bosse's, that would result in them getting their master's degree and teaching certification at no cost to the staff member, other than to cover their textbook materials, and that is being done offered through a grant through New York State. We've also had multiple meetings with Manhattanville. We have an informational meeting scheduled next week on December 16th for our staff members that would be interested in pursuing a degree in administration, so that is something that we are planning and moving towards. Along those same lines, we have a current cohort of staff members through SUNY New Paltz that are working towards getting their administrative degree. That program started last year, and they are set to complete their certification by April of this year, which means that come next year, we will have a new crop of our own staff with their administrative certifications. The next action item is to attend a job fair, that's listed at 10% because it has not happened yet, however, we are registered for March 25th in the springtime for the Mid-Hudson Regional Teacher Recruitment Day, that's held at SUNY New Paltz. That's a great opportunity for us to meet with potential teacher candidates, and a lot of it is pre-selected, so that we're able to go back to our task force to say, we've identified these recruitment gaps in these areas, these are the certificated areas that we want to look for and, and meet with, with these teacher candidates to help bridge those gaps again. So, that's, that will be coming up in the spring. All right, next slide. Oh, did I, oh, sorry, go ahead, I skipped that one, go back, sorry. And update and implement interviewing protocols, this is also part of our task force. Again, they meet monthly, this group is charged with reviewing our current hiring handbook and interviewing procedures, the goals to identify areas that are going to make, you know, for improvement, and necessary revisions to ensure consistency, equity, and alignment to, to best practices in, in our hiring across all departments. So, the plan is to deliver an updated hiring handbook by the end of this school year, by the end of June, to be implemented with the start of, you know, over the summer for the start of next school year. Ongoing training, so this is something that is ongoing. The CNI Office, the Curriculum Office, has done a great job working with the instructional staff at providing professional learning opportunities. The HR department has taken on working with some of our non-instructional departments, so we'd like to make sure that we're offering that, those professional learning opportunities throughout the year, so that it's ongoing, but focusing on our superintendent conference days, we, we partnered with different departments to make sure that we were, we were offering professional learning opportunities for every single staff member in Monroe Woodbury. So, some of those departments included our custodians, and our custodial department, food services, the business office, the HR offices, our clerical, our safety aides, again, with the goal that everybody in our, in our district will have opportunities for professional learning and professional growth. So, that is ongoing, since then, we take information that we get from our staff members through surveys, and that way, we can drive and tailor our professional learning opportunities for them for the rest of the school year and upcoming superintendent conference days. Mentoring, this is something that is also ongoing, we're at 50%. We have continued our administrator mentoring program, which was established last school year, the middle of last school year. This is geared towards non-tenured administrators, and we do have over 20 non-tenured administrators. They are grouped together and they meet monthly with different members of central administration. There is very targeted mentorship and topics that are discussed, but also, it gives them the opportunity to discuss real-world, complex scenarios happening within their departments, their building levels, and able, enable us to have professional dialogue to kind of work through those things. So, it's been a great program, while it's geared towards non-tenured administrators, all of our administrators have the opportunity to participate. The MWTA mentoring program, this is something that we continue to partner, Dr. Morales and I, with the MWTA, just to ensure that we're providing meaningful mentorship for our teachers and, and teaching assistants, and we look at the time that we're offering our, that mentorship, you know, we want to make sure that everybody has what they need to be successful. And the last thing is monitoring salaries, again, this is something that is also ongoing. We're always collecting regional data from Orange County school districts, Hudson Valley school districts, and then we use that data to ensure that we are remaining competitive, you know, amongst the region. One of the things in collecting that data, that we realized, is that we could be more competitive in the areas of some of our substitute rates, and with your support and approval, we've been able to increase the substitute rates for food services and, and our bus drivers since the start of the school year, to better align with, with the county. So, I appreciate your support in all of our initiatives. Are there any questions regarding Goal Number Two?
An extension of what Mike has asked before, so these percentages, they represent a number of tasks completed, like you have goal points to complete, how is this called?
They're percentages?
Percentages.
So, a lot of it is over, this is ongoing, and most of these things are going to continue to happen over the course of the year. So, you see 40% or so, because that's about where we are in the school year, we're not going to stop doing professional learning opportunities at any point during the year, so, but we're, so we won't really be completed until the end of the year, but it has taken place. So, it has evolved, we do a lot of planning. Some of the lower-end ones is because you have, and very specific things that are, that will be, in the beginning, we established, we established that they would be completed at the very end of the school year, that it wouldn't necessarily be ongoing in the fall and in, and in the spring. So, some of the others in the areas of, if you would go back to the, the other slide, we're at 10%, because again, the job fair, that hasn't happened yet. We've done a little bit of work to be able to identify those areas that we want to meet with, and we've done work with registering and paying to be there, but we haven't attended yet, so that won't happen until the spring. You know, the, the updating and implementing interview protocols, we're having those conversations and we are meeting, but it's not that, the final product won't be until June, so, you know, there's more work to be done there. But most of it is based on where we are currently in the school year, because for five out of seven, it's all ongoing. It's already started and it will continue, it's not going to stop until the end of the year.
Or the timeline.
Correct.
Are you guys using a formal project management methodology or workflow? There's, there's obviously different kinds that can be used.
It's not a formal tool, I think we gauge based on our own, depending on who is the owner of the goal, so...
Okay.
The technology goal is a little bit different than what Chris has described.
Yeah, so you're not using a formal program, because typically, and it's not a judgment, you don't run a project based on where you are in the year, you run it based on the tasks complete. So, like, I'm concerned about 10% for the interviewing, because you're saying it's based on where we are in the year, and I'm saying, okay, half the year's over, and we're only at 10%, and creating an interviewing kind of handbook or protocol. So, just, just to be clear, that's what I'm hearing.
Those two, those are the two that I said, the five out of seven were kind of based on, because they're ongoing, but those were the two where the expectation is that they're going to be completed in June, so there's still more work that needs to be done in those areas to produce the final product. That was, that was my best, you know, estimation, because there's always work that, that needs to be done to get to that final product. However, the other five are the ones that have been ongoing, and you see that are listed there, where it says "ongoing," because it starts in the fall and it continues throughout the entire year. Those were the two that the final product is really, will be produced in either the spring or June.
So, I want to add, I understand what, what you're asking, and I want to be clear with the public and the Board, we don't have an objective method to, to measure these, these goals. These goals were intended to be global. If you refer back to August, what I shared is that at the district level, we intentionally write these goals to be global, and these goals are nested down to the classroom. In other words, your departments, your buildings, they create their goals based on these global goals. And because these, this is a wide array of goals, there, there aren't any objective metrics in some cases, it's, it's just not. We put this, these percentages up here at the, at the direction of the Board. If it were me, in my opinion, I would not, I would not put these percentages up there. But I understand that we want to create a visual, you know, for the public to see, but the truth of the matter is, some of our yearly goals at the district level, we won't even touch until the second half of the year. So, as we update, we don't have a choice but to put, I guess, a zero, but that's not to say that, that these goals, we're not, we're not addressing these goals, but some of them simply can't happen. If the goal is to have a, you know, job fair, well, there's prep that's taking place, probably at the building level, the departments or whatever, but it's not tangible, it's not always tangible items to, to put there. Okay, Goal Number Three.
Thank you. So, the Goal Number Three is building the resilient cybersecurity framework for a safe and secure learning environment. This is over year two of the three-year project. If you remember, last year, as a district, we made a decision to look at these practices for cybersecurity. There are many studies that has come out in the last four or five years that talks about when this district is providing safe and secure environment, learning flourish, teaching flourish. From that perspective, last year, we did the, the review of CIS controls. CIS controls are the normed controls in any organization, whether it's an educational institution, banks, hospitals, they follow the NIST, under the NIST, NIST guidelines, they follow specific controls. We have total 18 controls, and as a district, we made a decision to review six controls every year. So, for this, for the last year, when we reviewed the first six controls, I'm happy to say there were no significant findings, or the gap that needs to be mitigated, or the risk needs to be acknowledged. This year, starting with the outside folks, outside the auditing forum, they would come and they would engage us in terms of what are our best practices for the, this, the next controls, which is the control sets of seven to 12. And those control seven to 12 ranges from the continuous vulnerability management, audit log management, email and web browser protection, malware defense, data recovery, and network infrastructure management. Now, those six controls also have subcontrols, so there's total 47 subcontrols, and each control would have a line of, what is our current practice, do we document what we say, and then how do we test it? If we are restoring a backup from, from a file server, what is our practice, and can we actually go back in a time when we say we can, and then do it? So, that work has been continuously happening since September, we have met with the outside auditing firm a few times, and we have provided them all the detailed document, so right now, they are in a process of reviewing our documents, and, and that goal is about 75% complete. The next step generally, it is, they will review it, they might have some more requests for information, and then we will review at the end of, at the end of either March or April, to come up with a final decision on what are the gaps that they are finding. The purpose of doing this is identifying the gap and mitigate the gap with the support of the superintendent and the Board, before anybody else finding. So, this is a more a continuous efficiency increase exercise. This is the, the second year of third year, the last six control will be the next year. As a part of that bigger umbrella of seven to 12 control maintenance, one of the big exercises that we do now every year is maintaining the disaster recovery and incident response plans. The world is changing around us, from the cyber world, the AI is getting better in terms of instruction, so does the AI is getting better on the not-so-positive side. So, it is a continuous monitoring for us, what are the, what are the, the new type of the, the attacks outside, how are we prepared in terms of that type of the disaster? Last year, if you remember, when I presented to you, there was an issue with the, with the wildfire, we had never done that in the area, now we have a, at least a plan to, to address that, that, in, in that scenario. So, we continuously monitor and update our incident response and disaster recovery plan. Sometimes it's simply a personnel change, not just a technology change. So, we, we are, we are on target, we are about 70% complete on that, that, that bullet. Professional learning, that is a continuous exercise for us, working with my colleagues in, in instructional and HR world. We provide all the time the different type of the support and technology and the professional learning. Specifically talking about this goal, this year, we took on, on a specific tabletop exercise for the technology department. So, we have all the buildings and district, we have incident command system. From that perspective, we develop a technology command system, and that allowed us to, to look into a little bit more deeper way to say, what does this mean if we need to set up the technology command center in another building, outside the district, away from the district, who are the organization that we can partner? And, and it was a phenomenal exercise to do, and it allowed us to, allow us as a team to identify some gaps, and then basically improvise on that. So, we are just about halfway from that goal's perspective. Any question on that previous goal before I jump to the next goal? Thank you. Next goal is another important one as well. Develop the comprehensive instructional technology plan. So cybersecurity is great, but it has to be in terms of implementation and supporting our students and staff instruction. I always joke around, technology is always great, but if we can use it in instruction, that's the biggest paper, or expensive paperweight. From that perspective, what we have done this year, this is also a state mandate to develop the instructional technology plan. Our current plan will be expiring twenty, twenty twenty-six June. We are developing a new plan for the next three years. What we have done so far, we have formed a team or a committee, the technology committee that, that we have from a variety of different stakeholders' perspective. Board member, parents, the, the, the students, the staff, teachers, all the different stakeholders, my colleagues on this table. And we have started working in the last couple of meetings that we met, what did we do in last three years that we said we do? Review that perspective and then come up with the new, the next three years of, of what are the goals and then how would we, we achieve the goals? When we wrote the last technology plan, there was no AI conversation. And now AI may be writing half of the school districts plan. So it's just the world that we are living in now. Audit the existing infrastructure devices and digital resource. That is actually a prerequisite for the, for the instructional technology plan. That's why you see that is hundred percent done. We had to do that in order for us to understand what we have and how are we using it before we ask for what we need to do in next three years. And then the ongoing professional development, professional learning for educators and the effective technology integration. This is another area that we are growing, working with my colleagues in instruction and HR, along with our technology coaches. We provide support and training for superintendent conference day based on AI or any technology for that matter. This year we have added a couple of more flavors. We have started the technology tip of the month. This is like, it's just a quick fifteen minutes virtual meeting with the administrators. Sometimes that group is more often the one that, that needs to be looking for what is the emerging technologies before the, our teachers and students do that. And it's, we have done one, we have second one coming actually tomorrow. And then the other one that we have developed is our educational technology time. This is just the, the more fact of what's coming, what's coming down the pike, what's available to our students and staff to, to keep going and, and learning from each other. That is about forty-five percent complete. Any questions on that?
No. Thank you so much.
Okay. I might be a bit biased on goal number five because this is my goal, but I truly believe that it is the most important goal that we can work on because it encompasses everything. It lays out the future. And what I want the board to know and the public to know, first and foremost, is that I heard you. And I'm going to continue to listen to you and execute with the board and the community's intent. This goal is a continuation of last year. During, right before COVID, this district formed a strategic planning committee and it was somewhat derailed due to COVID. So as I entered the district last year, that was one of the tasks I was given. We want to reinvigorate the district strategic plan. Last year, we spent the whole year really laying the foundation for the work that we're doing this year and the work that we're going to do next school year. So that began with forming a committee with all the stakeholders, all the stakeholders meaning teachers, administrators, board members, parents, people that make up our community. That is the strategic planning committee. So we formed, I would say a draft mission and vision statement last year, and I emphasize draft because we were just working as a committee. And as we entered the spring of last year, we got to the point where we had developed four focus areas. Those focus areas are achievement, community, opportunity, safety, and security. So that was very important, the work we did last year. But the final step was now that we have worked as a committee and pretty much created this little draft and foundation, now we need to hear from the public. We need to hear from the greater community. And we discuss, how do we want to do that? What is the most effective way and the most authentic way to get feedback and input from the community? So we actually canvassed several agencies to help us go through a data collecting process. And the agency that we selected was Generation Ready. And they were vetted. And they were vetted by our people, not just Tracy Norman or the cabinet, but the committee, which consists of all stakeholders. So the intent for this year was to go through the data collection process. And so if you look at that first task, that's what it's saying, that we're going to partner with an outside agency to pretty much figure out ways that we, the most effective ways to, to gather input from the community. And more importantly, how to make meaning of what they tell us. There's a myth in many cases that you send a survey and if the majority of people say something, then that's what we should do. Quite the contrary. We know that, for example, we have a marginalized population or populations in our district and if twenty percent says they feel invisible, then we're not going to ignore that. In fact, we would do quite the opposite, whereas eighty percent might say that they feel, you know, seen, heard, or divorced. So the intent for this year was to figure out forums and ways to collect this data. And as you see on the screen, some of the things we talked about was surveys, small group forums, community sessions, so on and so forth. Now, so far, we have conducted small focus groups with students and we've gotten feedback. We've spoken with non-instructional instructional staff, parents, community, and they have told us things that, that we need to hear and publish. We're at the point now where we're looking at our survey questions that we're going to send out to the greater community. One of the things that this community said to me was when we did our previous strategic plan, we just had a canned survey, meaning that it was very general questions. So I promised the board and the community, we wouldn't have that this time. And that was one of the things that we shared with Generation Ready. We want questions that are specific to our community and things that we value. So they created questions, but then we had our committee look at those questions and somewhat wordsmith those questions, change words and make sure that we understood and our community understood. So now that we have the survey, that's to be sent out in January. And you see at the bottom where we have analyzed data, once we get the results back from those survey questions, then we're going to make meaning of it. The next slide, while you see zero, is because after we get the information back, then we're going to form our goals. We're just not there yet. And these goals will be five-year goals in each of those focus areas. And finally, in the spring, which says zero percent, we look to publish our strategic plan. Then the following year, we're going to pursue those goals and we're going to report out on those goals and we're going to show the status, you know, to what degree are we meeting those goals or not? That is our strategic plan. Questions?
Thank you so much.
Okay, goal number six, Mr. Cahill.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Norman. So goal number six is coordinate plan and execute district-wide multi-year capital and facilities management projects. And so the initial task with this was having to do with the compliance reporting with the New York State Education Department. I've mentioned in the past, for capital projects, there's a fairly involved process, approval and review process with New York State Education Department. And the, the process begins with design and specifications that are sent to the State Education Department Facilities Planning Group. Ultimately, they approve the plans, you go into construction, and we're at the stage with phase one, which is what we're talking about with the first task where, where we've, we've gone through the construction process for the most part, we're in a punchless stage. And so the final SED filings would be the substantial completion certification, which is very important. And most important in some ways is the final cost report, which is FCR up there. So final cost report is very important because that's actually what drives your building aid. And it's an important step and component in any capital project because you want to finish the final cost reports and close out the project as quickly as possible to begin your building aid. And when there are delays, there can be a misalignment financially between debt service repayment and, and the building aid. So we're at about fifty percent with that, perhaps even a little more because we've gone through all the front-end work associated with phase one. And for the most part, as I said, most of the construction for phase one is over. So fifty percent. Next task was continued development and execution of public relations communication plan. So we have a draft plan established. We're updating some of the narratives as things change and the project progresses. I have lobby posters, our work in process, WIP. Those are, I was going to bring a couple of those tonight, but I, I thought not to, but, but we're ready to roll some of that stuff out right now. We've had updates with the Board of Education on October twenty-second. Now, that wasn't public, that was a working session, but we had a public presentation on November nineteenth, and those would be ongoing, those presentations and, and informational meetings, faculty meetings as needed as we roll this out. We've had some meetings at Central Valley, we'll have some meetings in Pine Tree as phase two rolls out. So fifty percent complete there. Next slide. Continuing goal number six, so monitor support, the twenty-three, twenty-five capital program. And I, I call it twenty-three and twenty-five. I've mentioned this in the past, for those that haven't heard, because those were the two years where the financial authorization occurred. So ninety-eight million dollars was twenty-twenty-three, and then another sixteen point six million was, was last May in twenty-twenty-five. So we're implementing phase two. There's four phases, so we've, we've more or less gone through the construction phase for phase one. We're now rolling out phase two, design and construction work. So design work is complete at this point. We've gotten approvals from the New York State Education Department Facilities Planning Unit. Bids and awards are complete. In fact, tonight on the agenda, we'd be asking the board to approve, I think it's five contracts. So construction would commence spring and, and summer. So for this, we're saying we're twenty-five percent complete with phase two, as I described it. Finalized capital project financing and debt issuance plan, so that's the next task here. So we are twenty-five percent complete with that. Had a couple of meetings with our fiscal advisor, Munistat, and we have a meeting with the Palumba Group, that's what TPG stands for, to go through cash flow and, and some budget updates. And once we bring those elements together, we will have a fiscal plan, a borrowing plan. We, we roughly have that, but we need to be more specific about when we would be borrowing, how much we'd be borrowing, that sort of thing. The upside, the advantage for us right now is that unlike many districts, we have a fairly good capital reserve right now. And that's sort of, in the past, I've said, that's sort of our down payment. And that's why and how we're able to spend about a hundred and fifteen million dollars with no tax impact because we have our, our down payment, our reserve, and then the building aid is, finances the, the other part of that. So the, the local portion is more or less covered. So that takes some of the pressure off in, in terms of the fiscal plan, but we're going to bear down on that and, and finish that, I would say, winter twenty-twenty-five. Twenty-five percent complete. Next slide. So I'll, I'll speed this up a little bit because I think I'm, I feel like I'm going a little long here. So continuation of goal number six, coordinate and execute the renovation education center. So that was part of phase one and it is the, the piece of phase one. Phase one was actually about seven different things. It was four security vestibules, it was boilers at Smith Clove and new boilers at the high school, and the education center renovation was the final piece of that. So we're doing the windows right now, we've completed the roof, we've done the exterior brick repointing. We had a little mishap with the fire at the education center, so I, I have as the action step, fire reconstruction and the auditorium renovation. That's underway, but not complete. We've acquired the furniture and the equipment associated with the auditorium renovation, but I would call us fifty percent complete at this point. District-wide installation of classroom air conditioners, window air conditioners. So we've procured those, we installed those over the summer, so that's one hundred percent complete. Final task under goal number six, develop final feasibility study and plan for implementation of zero emission buses. Now, this falls under facilities because there is a fairly large facilities component to the full implementation of zero emission buses because these are electric, we need charging stations, electrical upgrades. So we're awaiting a final draft report. We've, we've initiated a report with CPL, our architecture firm. The report is in draft form and it's with NYSERTA, New York State Energy Research Development Authority. So they are the group that signs off and they also are funding seventy-five percent of the report for all districts in the state. So that, it's probably more than fifty percent complete, but I listed it as fifty. Okay, goal number seven, maintain sound fiscal stewardship of financial resources consistent with board policy and guidance. So under this goal, our primary task has to do with internal audits and internal controls. So in the past, we had one internal audit annually and districts have both an external auditor who audits the financial statements. We had that presentation early November. We have an internal auditor and we also have a claims auditor. So there, and there's the state controller, who is also an auditor, outside auditor. But in this case, we're talking about our internal auditor and in consultation with the audit committee, we agreed to increase the number of audits from one annually to somewhere between three and four. Right now, we've agreed on three. We've established the focus areas, so that's one of the ideas of the internal audit. We do a risk assessment, they update the risk assessment annually, and then pick an area of interest or risk to do a little bit deeper dive on in terms of the audit. So our areas for this year will be pupil personnel services, ECF is extra classroom fund, and board and superintendent governance and planning. Those are the three areas the audit committee agreed on. And we're twenty-five percent complete because those are in process. We have an audit committee for later in January where some of these, hopefully, results will be presented and discussed. Next slide. Continuing with goal number seven, maintain sound fiscal stewardship of financial resources consistent with policy and guidance. So develop a fiscally responsible budget meets the needs of students, staff, and families. So this has to do with the budget, obviously, developing the general fund budget. So first steps, when we're sort of, you know, right on the, in the beginning stages of budget development, budget call letter, which I would send out to the district stakeholders and budget builders. Initialization of the twenty-six, twenty-seven budget and win cap. There's many dozens, dozens of steps in building the general fund budget, but meet with budget builders, establish general fund requested budget. So these are the things that are asked for. We review that, evaluate staffing requests, which is obviously a huge part of our budget, and changes, staffing changes, calculate the tax cap and project revenue, including state aid. So those are the very high-level general steps to the budget and I'm going to call that fifteen percent complete because we're really just at the initial stages of that. Okay, goal number eight, institute the mandates and best, pardon? Yeah, we can, sure. Are there any questions so far?
I have a question. I don't know if it was a rumor I heard that the governor was looking at the bus electrification mandate and that it was going to be too onerous on schools, but I don't know if anything's come of that.
I'm not aware of anything that has officially come of it, but one thing that I, I have heard and I do think may happen is that we can request a waiver of up to two years. So the mandate was any new buses purchased after twenty-twenty-seven would be electric, zero emission. And so that would be pushed till twenty-twenty-nine. The twenty-thirty-five date is, is the deadline when the entire, every bus, every school bus should be electric at that point or zero emission, which now means electric. So I, I think that's probably realistic. I, I went to a meeting recently, which was largely, it was at Orange Old St. Ponce's, it was largely about the utility companies that were affecting the regional school districts. You know, so there's, there's a lot of issues. There's issues with the utility companies having the capacity. There's issue with the power when it comes to our property, and this is why it's a capital issue, that we would have to upgrade tremendously, the, the infrastructure to bring the power to the bus yards. Then we have to have charging stations, which are expensive, and then, you know, ultimately we have to buy the electric buses, which are very expensive. Mechanics training, that's, I mean, there's, there's a lot to this. Just to put in perspective, the typical bus now is about a hundred and fifty thousand. The electric bus similar would be about four twenty-five, four hundred twenty-five thousand. Now, there, there is some state money for that, but it's, it, it's still going to cost, I think, in Now, there is some state money for that, but it's still going to cost, I think, in the long run, more. It's not, it's not neutral financially, in my opinion.
Never mind the investment in structure that has to also be made to charge. I just figured I'd ask, because I heard, I've heard a story or read something that they were looking at it, but I know how those things, all their rumors, until they actually come down.
I mean, you know, I don't wanna prolong this, but one of the things we're gonna talk about, we've talked about it briefly and recently, is for next year's budget, which we're gonna discuss very soon, having one or more buses in the general fund budget, electric buses, that is. So we'll dip our toe in for next year, because it is a mandate, it is something that we have to do.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is it only on school districts or contractors?
It's, the question was, is it school districts or contractors as well? It's both. So it is school districts, so we're self-operated, and it is contractors. And that's even, that's a problem as well. You know, there may be, and I'm sure there are contractors that can't do this or don't wanna do this, and so who knows how that will affect the market.
Like, orange county bus, I see them on the road. You're saying that they would also have that mandate?
Correct.
Okay.
Same mandate applies. I know there's, there's one contractor in Middletown who's sort of on the cutting edge of it, but they're, you know, relatively, have a relatively small, they service Middletown, I mean, they're part of a larger company with a, you know, city area, so it's a little different, actually.
Thank you.
Anyways, I digress. I apologize. Okay, goal number eight, institute mandates, best practices, field school safety, ensuring safety, well-being students and staff. So this is a continuation of goal, our safety goal from last year, having to do with protocols, development protocol of safety protocols, distribution of information to staff. So for this year, we agreed we would, and we have done work with the vestibules, the new vestibules procedures. There were some growing pains, I would call it, with the new vestibules and how that was impacting the operations and visitor management and that sort of thing. So we've developed some written protocols, we've had training with staff. I know Joe Tripod, our Director of Safety Security, has been out to every, every school with the new vestibule, and we've kind of gone through and established what those best practices are. So we estimated that at twenty-five percent complete. I would say it's probably a little higher, but, you know, that's what we put that at. Implement new remote panic alarm system district-wide, so we talked about this a lot last year, and actually more recently. So I'm calling that twenty-five percent complete. We're having weekly meetings with Synthegix and another group that they work with. Bargov's been very instrumental in that, he's been actually leading that, so thank you. But there's a lot to this. There is the technology side, where we're, you know, establishing equipment that is literally broadcasting a signal on every campus. There's the back-end configuration of that, there are, I have mapping updates, so there's a mapping component to this with all the buildings. There's a lot of operational protocols that need to be ironed out and established, so that's ongoing. I'm calling it twenty-five percent complete. I think we'll probably be operational maybe in the spring, and, you know, there's a big training component with staff as well, so that touches a lot of areas. And, you know, the final task under goal number eight would be initiate a pilot program to procure go-bags slash lockdown kits for the high school, for the classrooms. That was a recommendation of best practice, so we've initiated that. At the high school as a pilot, we've gotten one hundred and sixty classrooms outfitted with these lockdown kits. We're waiting a few final items, but I'm calling that seventy-five percent complete. And, you know, depending on how it goes, I think it's going well, you know, it's probably something we'll roll out district-wide ultimately.
So I know that was a lot, and we have reached the end of our goals, but I have noted some of the comments and questions that were asked. And when we report out next time, hopefully within a couple of months, we'll try and be a little bit more succinct here and concise, and we'll certainly make those adjustments with the metrics, and we'll put the side by side to show the progress. And if we can, you know, get creative to apply a scientific method to some of the goals, we'll certainly do that as well. So pending your questions or guidance, this concludes our presentation.
I don't have any other questions, I just know the amount of work that goes in, so really wanna say thank you and appreciate the effort that was put into that presentation.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, next up on the agenda, approval of the minutes. May I have a motion to approve the November nineteenth minutes?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next up is the policy manual. We have a waiving of the first reading of policy five-one-five-one and number five-one-five-one R. Are there any questions? Okay, may I have a motion to waive the first reading?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number ten point two, policy manual update, second reading and adoption, five-one-five-one and five-one-five-one R. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. District-wide school safety plan. Public comment on the district-wide school safety plan for twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six. Okay, we don't have anybody registered to speak or ask any questions on it. Are there any questions from the board? Okay, may I have a motion to approve the district safety-wide plan?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Committee reports by Board of Education Committee, policy.
Yeah, I'll start. You just approved the motion to, I'm sorry, to waive the first reading on two policies, and we met on November twenty-fourth to discuss them, and you've just approved the second reading, and now they become policy. We do not have a date yet for our next meeting, because we are still awaiting for comments from our attorneys on some policies that we were sent, were sent to them.
Are there any questions? Okay. We have visitation and capital project task force, but Mr. Reynolds is not here, so unless, Patrick, you have any updates to provide?
I could speak to the capital project advisory task force, so there's five contracts for approval on the agenda tonight for Phase Two. We also have a small modification to the project labor agreement on the agenda tonight. I had mentioned that in an update to the board recently. So Phase Two would be starting this spring, and Phase Two is about the tennis courts at the rear of Central Valley, reconstruction of the tennis courts with new lighting and bleachers, fencing, and new softball field lighting for the girls' softball field, and a great deal of work at Pine Tree Elementary School. So we're doing exterior brickwork, fire alarms, we're doing a roof this summer, and starting the HVAC work, and that will take some time to get that completed. And we're, as I mentioned before, we're in the punchless stage for Phase One, and at the Ed Center, not quite finished, window installation is happening, the auditorium reconstruction is happening, and we're trying to reconstruct the couple of offices from the fire damage. It should be ready on or about, I would say, June thirtieth of this year. That's it.
Great. I'll give the audit committee update. January twenty-six, twenty-twenty-six, at six PM will be the next meeting. The public is invited to come, and it is held at the Harriman Center. Any questions? Okay, the OXPBA update from Dulaya, Dulaya's not here, so we'll get an update the next time.
Yes.
Okay. So we are already at the student board representative report.
Good evening and happy Wednesday. I hope everyone week has been lovely so far. This Monday, December eighth, I had a meeting with a good handful of Monroe Woodbury High School students between grades nine to twelve. I came with a couple of questions prepared for them, but the visit was more of discussion, and what they pointed out were topics we delved deeper into, just like the same one at the male school. Starting off, the topic that students felt the most positive about was security at the high school. They loved how the police and security guards were actually walking around and doing things, not trying to look busy, but they also expressed that they feel completely safe in the building throughout the school day. Also, the implementation of those lockdown kits mentioned earlier adds to the safety of the high school. In terms of classes, the students said that the classes they enjoy really depend on numerous factors, like what the class is, the topics they're learning, but most importantly, the teachers. They also wished that there were certain classes or electives that you could take, where you were taught life skills and that everyone were able to use, no matter what their future entails. So this course that they really want is very similar back in the Monroe Woodbury Male School called Facts Eight. And that class, they would learn skills like how to sign checks, pay bills, how insurance works, job processes, and just everyday life stuff that you need for a adulting. They also said that they don't have that many problems communicating with other students or their friends throughout the school day, but they did mention that administration and teachers mainly only listen to problems brought up by a huge group of students or certain students themselves. To fix that, they problem-solved and thought that having more opportunities to speak to more administration, to see that their opinions and voices matter in decisions, would be lovely. In terms of teachers and staff, the students said that teachers and staff really make or break their moods and feelings towards the school. A friendly teacher would make them enjoy the subject and learning more. There was also this trend, bar up, which was also in the middle school, that teachers tend to give out more work than spend class time actually teaching the subject. This ended with complaints for both Monroe Woodbury High School and also middle school students saying that they have to teach yourself the material at home more than they were done at school. But overall, high school students said that they really like a lot of the teachers in the building, and most of the teachers are really nice and friendly, which is always great. It was also mentioned that the high school has lots and lots of extracurricular activities, so there is always something for everyone to do, and, but there should be more information going around throughout the school day about certain clubs, so more students could learn and join those clubs. Pep rally was also mentioned, and that tends to be the great highlight of the school year, that the students said, and asks for more things like that throughout the year, but usually the high school has a winter spirit week, which I am pretty sure is coming up. The topics of the bathrooms at the high school was mentioned, but I am very well aware that the administration at the high school is on top and fixing students' behaviors in the bathrooms, so I won't directly talk about that. And lastly, we ended the discussion about the yonder pouches. The students stated how the enforcement of the pouches being explained to them in detail was great, instead of just enforcing it without explaining and having the students follow it without really knowing why. They also wished that they could use certain devices, like iPods or walkbands or just music-listening devices, to listen to school during the school day instead of them being banned. In the end, the students noticed that they focused a lot more in their classes, but it was mentioned study halls get a little bit more boring without their phones. There are, in fact, lots of good things going on in the high school and great things coming up. But to switch gears really quick, that was my meeting and my visit at the high school recently, and a survey I made at the beginning of the school year for both high school and middle school students, so grades six to twelve, has officially been closed, with sixty-nine responses from high school students and one hundred and eighty responses from middle school students, so a good total of two hundred and forty-nine responses. And to end my report today, I thought I could share a few responses I got from students. Starting off strong from a seventh grader, they said that they enjoyed a variety of clubs and liked having the opportunity to try something new that they never would have tried on their own, and they really like having their class in the library. It was also refreshing to have that change of pace and get out of the classroom, and they mentioned it was comfortable and fun and hope to do it more often. An eleventh grader states, they do the BOSI CTE program and are on the wrestling team in the winter, and they really enjoy both, and those are the highlights of their day. An eighth grader wished for more food options or holiday celebrations from different cultures at lunchtime. And another eighth grader says that they miss field day at elementary school and going outside to take little breaks, especially in study hall, and also thinks school would be more enjoyable if there was a fun way with teaching a lot more kids, so they could pay attention a little bit more. And to the question, if you could change something to the school that you would do, a ninth grader in the high school said adding an escalator. A twelve grader says, they dislike the fact that you cannot have music devices playing to use in free periods, like CD players or MP3 players, at least for them, because music helps relieve a lot of the stress they have built up during the day and helps them focus. And to end it off, a seventh grader said one thing that they are looking for this year is holidays. Of course, I would love to share a lot more, I have many responses, and some are pretty funny, and that's my report for this meeting. My next visit is Wednesday, December seventeenth, last medical elementary, and everyone have a happy holiday season, because that is right around the corner. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next up, we have personnel. Mr. Berger?
Thank you. I am respectfully requesting approval for personnel items fourteen point one through fourteen point twenty.
Does anyone have any questions? May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Business and financial, Mr. Cahill?
Thank you. I respectfully request approval of business and financial items fifteen point one through fifteen point nine.
Any questions? I have a comment. I really appreciate the cover memos on the contracts and the summaries, it was very helpful. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Committee on Special Education and Preschool Education, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Reports by board and central office.
Great report, Zoe. Very quickly, I highly recommend, and this is for the high school students that are here, that students look up the personal management course up at the high school, which is the personal financial literacy course. It relates to some of the comments, I think, that the kids made of the course that they liked when they were in the middle school. It's worth definitely kids checking it out, it's a really good course. Just a quick reminder to everybody to please double-check the district calendar, and I highly recommend attending one of the district concerts, they're amazing. Happy holidays, get home safe.
Just wanted to say congratulations to Suzanne and Caitlin. Thank you to the high school for hosting us, especially with the last-minute change. Thank you for the update on our district goals, that was much appreciated. And thank you to Zoe for always keeping the voice of the students in this meeting. Happy holidays.
Thank you.
Good evening. I had an opportunity to attend the third-grade chorus concert for Pine Tree last night, as well as fourth-grade chorus for North Main. And I would like to thank Mr. Coats and Ms. Veltadji for putting on a wonderful concert, and it was great to sit in the audience and be able to watch our students' faces as they took their place on stage. Coming up, looking forward to the Pine Tree Read-A-Thon and the grade-five concert next week. Everybody get home safely.
Thank you. Mr. Berger?
Good evening. I too wanna congratulate Caitlin and Suzanne in their new role on the board and their new positions. I want to congratulate all of the new hires and appointees. I know a lot of them are starting their first day of employment tomorrow, so welcome to Monroe Woodbury. And as Dr. Hassler stated, concert season is underway, so just wanna wish luck to our students that are participating in upcoming concerts across the district, and wish everybody a happy and healthy holiday season and new year. Thanks so much, have a good evening, get home safe.
Thank you.
I'll go next. So big shout-out to high school students, staff, and administration team for hosting the Stria Street Assembly this morning. It was a very powerful message to our students, and the message was what a one-time substantive use can change it to the life-altering events. Great, great presenter, and a really powerful message at the end of the assembly process. With that, happy holidays to everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to echo what others have said tonight. I'd like to congratulate Suzanne and Caitlin for their new positions, and I hope everyone has a happy holiday season and a nice evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to the cabinet for the presentations, we know how much work goes into it. I wanted to congratulate Caitlin and Suzanne on the election and get home safe.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you firstly to the high school for hosting us. Thank you firstly to the high school for hosting us, especially with the wintry weather going on. Future congrats to all the students at the concerts, either if they already have there or if it's in the future, because I know they're going to be amazing, because they rock. And again, thank you for the central office for that presentation. I know presentations take a lot of work, and make lots of them for my classes, so thank you for that. And again, happy holidays, and please stay safe on these roads while driving. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to thank Dr. Norman and the cabinet for their update on the district goals, and Zoe for your presentation. Thank you so much. I'd also like to congratulate, congratulate our new hires, and I did go to see the sixth grade yellow and greenhouse, I believe it was, last week, and I cannot believe that there are only sixth graders. Our kids are amazing. And I'm looking forward to the career fair on Friday and the Read-A-Thon at Pine Tree. And with that, I'd like to wish everybody a very, very happy holiday season.
Thank you. Dr. Norman?
So I want to begin by acknowledging the Saffy community, and we were scheduled to have our Board of Education there, meeting there tonight, and I know that community was looking forward to it and did a lot of prep work, and we were excited to hear those kindergartners perform. So unfortunately, we can't control the weather, but I just want to acknowledge the work and prep that they put in, and I'm sorry that we wasn't able to, to host there. And on that note, I want to thank the high school for, for just hosting us at the last minute. I know that we ask a lot when we ask you to shift gears and set up, but, but you do it, and you do it well, and we appreciate that. I also want to thank you, Michael, I want to thank you, sir, for assuming the role of actually leading this meeting at the last minute. I acknowledge that things happen, and people step up, and I know that that's not easy. So I thank you on behalf of the community for, for assuming the role and running the meeting tonight. Certainly want to welcome Suzanne, Caitlin, in your new positions. I look forward to working with you in your new roles. So today, I had the opportunity to continue my super-sub initiative, and I served as substitute at the North Main Elementary for the third-grade teacher, Tammy Juro. And, you know, I want to just say it's so wonderful to go back into the classroom, get back to my original roots of teaching, but I learned so much, and I always walk away with rich experiences. And I hope that you teachers in particular are listening. You do an amazing job, and when you get away from teaching, like I have as an administrator for many years now, because you don't live it and touch it every day, it becomes abstract. But when you get back in the classroom and you see all those nuances that you all do well, that's so important to the success of our students and our community, thank you. Thank you. And I'm glad that I had the opportunity to spend time with those third graders, and Ms. Juro, if you're listening, make sure you go back and reteach the things that, that I taught today. This week, my wife and I had the pleasure of hearing the young Central Valley musicians at their winter concert, and they did an amazing job. Kudos to our hard-working music teachers for a job well done. Lastly, as our students and staff prepare for an extended winter break, I want to wish all members of our community a joyful holiday season and a peaceful and healthy New Year. Thank you, and safe travels tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Norman. I want to echo pretty much what everybody said. The presentations were great, I know all the work that goes into those type of presentations, so really valuable information, especially the updates to the community. Congratulations to Caitlin on her appointment as BOE president, and congratulations to Suzanne as our new vice president. And I want to wish everyone a happy, healthy, blessed holiday season and New Year. Be safe and have fun. With that, may I have a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss Personnel Matters?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.